... of the whole board meeting on July 22nd. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Leidner.
Here.
Januari.
Here.
Ms. Collett.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Paulson.
Here.
Mr. Rutledge.
Here.
Mr. Hanlon is absent.
And I clearly had some wishful thinking and wanted it to be July, but it is January 22nd. Ms. I don't know.
There won't be any audio.
Okay. All right, Mr. Long, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson.
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge.
Yes.
Ms. Leidner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerppe.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Ms. Collett.
Yes. There are two topics on our agenda tonight. The first one is on our middle school capital projects. Dr. Shuler, could you please introduce this?
Yeah, happy to, and I'm going to actually bring Michael Dolter up. Mike, you can either speak, you want to speak from there or you're welcome to join at the...
I'm pointing from here.
Perfect.
I can do it from here.
That'll be perfect. So, the board has before met seen Mike Dolter, who is one of our lead architects with Perkins and Will that's really led the effort. So, we, I think through the master facility planning process, we spent a lot of time with Michael and his team. Since we really launched the referendum effort and especially since it's approved, we've really gotten to know Michael and his team extremely well with the amount of time that we spent. But I'm really, really appreciative of the work that our professional teams have done. So, here's kind of focus for tonight. I just want to make sure that the board understands that this is the continuation of a discussion that you're going to have over several meetings as we move through the spring tonight. Is really going to focus primarily on giving the board an update in the timeline for your middle school capital projects. So timeline both in terms of when you can expect action to come in front of the board, but also a timeline of when the actual work will be done. So from the last conversation that we had, I think certainly the interest and request of the board and our teams, we've helped to accelerate the timelines. We're going to show you what that's going to look like. And then, Michael's going to give you a little bit of a design update tonight, really focused on just kind of high level, some of the changes that we've made. And that's going to then continue in February, I think with a more detailed update even of some of the design elements. So, again, this is part one. Feel free to ask questions as they come up as we're working through this. Just understand some of the questions, the answer may be, that's coming in February if we can hang tight till probably our next update. So, with that, Michael, go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you very much again. My name is Mike Dolter. I'm a senior project architect with Perkins and Will, working with the district for quite some time now. Very pleased, great to be here with you all tonight to talk about the middle school projects. As Dr. Shuler led, we'll be talking, providing a schedule update, looking at sort of a global schedule, and then digging down into some finer points to that, just so you understand, you know, what's going to be coming in the next few months, few years, and how we're moving forward with that. And then we'll give an update, just a brief synopsis of some planning work that we've been doing, trying to look for some additional efficiencies within the process, within the plans, and how we've been able to do that so far in a couple targeted areas. And as Dr. Shuler also said, we intend to bring a broader design presentation to you in February, and, you know, continuous information will be coming to you on a regular basis from here on out. So without further ado, I'll provide a brief schedule update and get a little scroll happy here. So is there a way to bring that down? My mouse doesn't seem to work. The mouse doesn't want to work. We go back to the previous slide. That'd be great. Thank you. So, you've seen this slide before. We use it kind of as a baseline, just to understand, you know, what the design process looks like and where we sit in this. So, the design process really is a multiple different phases. Each one of these phases has a checkpoint at which we make sure that, one, the design is going in the right direction from all the drivers that have been developed from the district side, and, two, we're financially in a good position overall or in any one of the components that we're looking at. As we move through the design process, we get more and more information, less and less is unknown, and we more and more become certain to the point where we reach the end of our documenting stage and go out to bid, and then we get into construction there. So, as you'll see in the next few slides, we're in multiple different phases and multiple different portions of the projects. We've expedited moving forward some of these projects. So, we're in the contract document stage with some of these, some of the stages. We're in the design development with some of the project, and we've wrapped up schematic design with other portions of the project. So, we're going to keep on moving through this process in each one of those areas as well. So, we've developed, working with the district as well as with Nicholas Construction Manager, a three issuance approach. There's some sub issuances here, but this is the main approach to that. We've expedited work on issuance one, so this is work that will be built in the summer of 2025. As we went through and looked at, you know, looking at the building systems and mechanical and electrical plumbing systems at each of the schools, as well as what could be easily brought forward, it was really thought that there's some enabling work that can be done at both Monroe and Franklin for the issuance two work, as well as a wide range of 30-plus classrooms at Monroe that can be renovated. Because the idea there being, the building systems at Monroe, from an individual classroom standpoint, are in good enough shape that they will, that they're fine to continue with those, and we can really focus on updating those classrooms within there. So we'd expect to see some bid packages come through. We've had, we have early release packages as well as the main packages that you'll start to see in February or March of this year. Issuance two is focused on the building additions. That's at all three schools. We'll also see some additional work that might be associated with that at each one of those schools, things that are either directly related to those projects or really work well with those projects. That work, again, will start in the summer, anticipated to be complete by the end of summer 2026 to go online there. So that is the enabling work that we talked about in issuance one, is to allow for the projects in issuance two. So expedite that work upfront so that we can roll directly into the issuance to major construction portions. Issuance three, that's the bulk of the work. So that's our summer 2026, our summer 2027 projects. We said, we have a little caveat on rider on that slide there that says that issuance three could be broken out if necessary, you know, based on timing, scope, or budget into multiple different packages, or it could be extended into 2028 if there is additional need for cleanup with that. But the plan right now is for the work to be complete by the end of summer 2027. It's an aggressive schedule overall, as you'll see in the next slide where we talk about the overall sort of gant look at the project here. And again, I apologize if my scroll won't work here. So if there's any way I can, thank you. So, okay, this is building on the project schedules that we worked on in the beginning of last year with you. We had come to you beginning of last year with a, with sort of a different levels of aggressive schedules to see where you wanted to be, and that was really what spurred on the continuing on the design process after the initial concept design was completed in June of last year. And we continued working on that, taking some real look at this at the end of last year to try to understand, okay, upon a successful referendum, where do we want to be if we want to be, and how aggressive can we be with the overall project? And that led to the schedule that you see here. You have a little bit more detail in your packets. It's maybe a little harder to see here, but the idea is, again, as we laid out with the three issuances, issuance one, two, three, you'll see that on the left, and then these are, these progress in, include design bidding, board action, permitting, and construction, and post-construction efforts. So you can see how that lays out here. Where, as I said, we're currently in the contract documents preparation for issuance one. We've gone through and issued a global schematic design package for all projects at the end of December. That allows us to have at the end of this month a better, a global viewpoint of where we sit on the overall project budget, and then we can align that with the overall design as well, give you a better picture on where we sit with that schematic design package, and then move on with that. The issuance one, we'll see a board action come in March for that. That's the summer 2025 projects. We're also working with the district to develop sort of prototype classrooms in Monroe so that we can test out some furniture approaches as well as technology approaches in there. We've had conversations with a district-wide middle school classroom user group that allows us to get some feedback. So that's been established to provide feedback on current conditions, future conditions, as well as be a sounding board for how those prototype classrooms are working out from that standpoint. And the goal there is, again, use those as a real good touch point to distribute those ideas to the first classrooms at Monroe that are done, gain some input from those classrooms, refine that even further, and then be able to implement that in issuance three. We don't want to blindly go out with all the classrooms. We're in the opportunity to have a feedback mechanism at both small and medium scales that we can use really to influence how we can shape any of the future classrooms as well. So issuance two, you'll see that we've broken that up into two, two sub issuances. We have an early package that we're looking at for the building additions that will be the building infrastructure. So, we're talking site improvements and structure and underground. The first things that need to come out of the ground, we're going to expedite that forward so that those can be bid in time for a early summer start. The goal with issuance two, in order to do that, is to get enclosed before winter. We want to avoid having the buildings exposed well to winter conditions. There's some additional costs that are incurred from doing that, as well as it just tends to slow down the construction process. Issuance two B will come a month later, and that's going to be the rest of the building additions. So everything above the ground and inside the buildings will be bid at that time. We have looked at the overall schedule, again, the, there's more complexity at Monroe and at Franklin for the building additions as part of issuance two, less so at Edison. Edison is focused on the expansion of the gymnasium to the south. So that Edison, because of the impact that that would have on the educational process in this, at Edison, taking down their main gym, we wanted to focus work on that when into spring, when students can be outside for classes, so that we can take down the main gym, do that expansion work, and have the least impact on education in the building that we can. So we have that, everything wrapping up by the end of summer of 2026. You'll see there's a little bit of a grade outline after that. There's always the possibility that the construction would go beyond that. I think the benefit that we have right now from, for the projects that we're looking at, we do have some facilities in the existing building that would take some charge of those if necessary. We can do some contingency planning if it comes to that, but the goal is, again, to be done by the beginning of the school year 2026, 27. Issuance three there, we're simultaneously going through the design process for issuance two and three right now. We'll see that take more preference as we move through the phase here, but, again, we want to take advantage of the teachers and students while they're in session to get any feedback from them as possible. So we use that, the time that we have for the user groups to look at the holistic project and get that feedback all throughout that. We'll really dive deeper into the documentation of that in design development, which comes out in June, and then through our contract documents for issuance three, which will go into October of this year, with an anticipated board action in November or December of this year. So it's a, it's a absolute whirlwind of design in this year in order to get that done, and it's a very aggressive approach to construction, but our partners over at Nicholas are confident that they can execute that. I will note, as I did in the previous slide on issuance three, we do have a contingency for additional work in 2028, if that's just button-up work, or if that's anything else that just really makes sense in order to move to 2028, that can be done. But the overall goal here is to, is to complete that by the end of 2027. Any questions on this? Yes?
I understand the regional office of education has to approve these plans.
That's correct.
And I'm assuming municipal approvals as well. Are you in conversation with those entities?
Yes.
So that we won't have any surprises from you.
Yes, we've had multiple conversations with the City of Wheaton Engineering Department on stormwater, and we've also built in the stormwater approval process with multiple different re-issuances into the project plan. We've had multiple conversations with the City of Wheaton Development, and we've started in on our zoning process with the City of Wheaton already. So we were anticipating a submittal to them very shortly, and then you'll see some, you'll see some back and forth between us and them with potential hearings based on some of the pieces that are necessary, minor questions that we're asking them for relief upon. But those are, we're working through those processes right now.
You don't see any red flags at this point?
Nothing right now. We think we've, the good thing, the hardest sticking point is always how to deal with stormwater, and what we've done is we've had our pre-conferences with the engineering department, so we understand, we can bounce off the ideas that the team has there and make sure we're going in the right path without just blindly submitting it. And so we think we're on a good plane, good path with that.
What's the process for the regional office of education?
We have an introductory meeting that we'll be setting up with the Regional Office of Education to walk them through the entire project. At that introductory meeting, what we typically do is develop a process by which we are going to submit how they want to see that done, when that happens, what they want that to be, to look like, and then the permitting process will roll through them. We'll do the same thing with police and fire. Informationally, we'll do, we'll walk through the projects with them just to make sure they understand, you know, at any given point of the year, what's going to be happening in the buildings, and that they can understand, because since they'll have to respond in real time on those two.
John, we did actually the same thing with the Wheaton Park District as well. While there's no formal approval of the Park District, I do just want to make sure, I think I mentioned this before, but want to call it out. So, where we are going to be building the extension to the gym at Edison, you currently have a lease agreement with the Wheaton Park District. So I think about 14 years ago, the school district leased a piece of property so that the Park District could redevelop the basketball courts behind Edison. And so, I do not anticipate any problem based on the conversation, but we're going to have to formally ask the Park District to break that lease agreement because we are going to be building back on top of a portion of it.
They are the tenant on our property?
No, yes, they are the tenant on our property, which, again, we had to do so that they could apply for, actually, it's similar grant to what the Carroll Stream Park District just got to develop the Carroll Stream Park. They applied for one of those grants to redevelop the basketball courts, and it required that we have a lease agreement with them. So, there's only a couple of years left on it. I don't anticipate that it's going to be an issue. I think what the Park District has anticipated is that they will likely have to just show how they are allowing for similar recreation space elsewhere, either on that property or elsewhere within the Park District.
So you don't want to mess up their grant compliance?
No.
And to build on that, we've also had the conversations with the Park District about, you know, about site logistics, since we'll be working in and around their sites, as well as understanding the impact of the, of when we're going to be taking facilities offline on their programming, so that we can outline that for them well ahead of time so they can understand that.
Appreciate the communication.
Hey, quick reminder to the board, and John, if you wouldn't mind, please make sure you do talk into, even though we can hear within this room, it just picks you up on the virtual, so.
So if I can pick up on that, that was actually my one question about the expansion at Edison. I was curious if that was going to infringe upon the basketball courts. So where are, are we responsible for providing or moving that area? I feel like every middle school has outdoor basketball courts. Are we removing that for Edison?
We're not removing it. So there will still be basketball courts out there, just not of the size that we had currently. So it'd be two half courts versus the full court. So there will still be play space back there. It's not used for any other formal functions, so the school's going to be fine. It's really just a matter of, so back to the grant piece, just a matter of making sure that that recreation space that was allowed for by the grant is accomplished elsewhere. But from a school perspective, what they currently use it for, which is really just primarily like, like when kids go out after lunch and other kind of gathering times, they will still have court space back there.
But it'll be a half court?
There'll be two half courts.
Do they make a full court? Like, are they two half courts or like one full court? That could be two half courts.
Two half courts.
Okay.
As of right now, they are two half courts.
And there's no opportunity for us to, to add back space that's currently?
We don't, we don't own a lot of property back there, so we're, but as it is, we're butting up against the space that's Park District, like field softball, baseball space, which I don't think you'd want to impede on.
Thank you.
I have a question. I feel like I've asked before, I just want to make sure, the schematic design and design development. So is the schematic design, like we saw drawings, you know, in presentations before the referendum, are those schematic designs?
Those were, that's even, that's before that. That is concept design. So that is where we take the main concept and put some life to it. We have a good understanding, but each one of these, each one of these phases after that, we're diving deeper and deeper into, you know, how does the existing building work? How do new facilities work? How does everything tie together? And then, you know, and our investigations continue to add more and more detail as we move through the additional phases.
This is probably a little too much of a deep dive, but I'm just trying to understand in my head the, so the drawings that are going to be build-ready drawings, is that part of this here?
Yes, that's contract documents, yes.
Okay, so that leads right into the contract.
Right.
Okay. And then, just for clarity, the issuance there, when you're talking issuance one, two, and three, is issuance of the bid packages for the?
Yes.
Separate from issuance of debt?
Yes, that's correct.
I just want to make sure that it's clear for anybody listening, that it's not, we're still doing two debt issuances and they're...
Yes, thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
So, in terms of the city approvals, do we have a pretty good handle on what our drop dead dates, here's when we need the city's final blessing to implement this work?
Yeah, we've backed, we've worked with development to back out what the schedule would look like, and add some contingency time onto that from a zoning standpoint. And then we've had, we had the same thing with engineering, where we've backed out and had a number of different re-issuances above and beyond what we would normally anticipate built into it, so we have some additional contingency built into that schedule.
Does the city understands what those dates are and?
We've talked...
If we can't work to those dates, it's going to be a problem.
Yeah, we've talked through, we've talked through the schedule with them, and we've tried to match up with them. I think, I think that there's an understanding there. I think we can explicitly make sure that they do understand that, for sure.
And then, at the ROE's office, do we know who we're, who are we working with that's going to, you know, approve the permit applications? Do we know who that is?
At the regional office? Go ahead, Brian.
We're waiting to hear back from Amber Quirk on specifically who her team is going to be, but I would imagine Greg Leiden is going to be involved at the top end of that because he is leading that department.
And I think Kelly is the other person that she mentioned today. But Greg she mentioned, she mentioned, I believe Kelly, somebody else that's in her office, but I saw Amber at another meeting today and reminded her of our need to...
I'm less worried about the approval schedule from the ROE, much more so with the city.
Yep. And like I said, we've, we had a sit-down meeting with development to walk through everything, you know, our assumptions on that. We're going to be a little more conservative on some of the requests for relief on a few of these items. There's, we're trying everything we can to stay within as-of-rights on the, on the site so that the as-of-rights is, is what's within the zone, what's allowed within the zoning ordinance on any site. So you're permitted to do X, Y, and Z in the zoning ordinance. If you stay within that, then you, then you submit and you, and you're good. If you have anything that's above and beyond that, you come back to the city and ask for relief of those, of those requirements. We have a few things, just because of the tightness of the sites or because of the reduction in parking, especially at Franklin, that we're going to be seeing some requests for relief of those. And there's alternate plans that have been developed for dealing with some of those off-site and, and other elements there. So it's not, it's not a huge pieces. As we talk to development, they understand where we are and what we're looking for, so they believe that they're, they're comfortable going forward with the process that way.
Well, I mean, you mentioned accelerated schedule, I think was, I appreciate how much work this is from roughly June, July of '24 all the way through, you know, into the fall of 2025. So I, thank you. I appreciate how challenging it is, all the different levers, three different buildings. So I just want to acknowledge the incredible effort that they've been willing to tackle on this issue.
Yeah, we're happy to do it and glad we can, glad we can, glad we have the opportunity to participate. So I'm going to go to the next slide and we can, we can jump back to that previous one if you want. This is just a, an example, kind of viewing what the, what a renovation scope may or may not look like in one, in each one of the phases. So we have the, each one of the summers has been identified here. We're doing work at, we know we're doing work at Monroe and Franklin as part of the first summer. The second summer becomes a very, you know, very aggressive work summer where we're doing renovations at all three schools as well as completing up the new additions. Those go online after the next, after that summer, and then we come back and finish out the additions after summer three. Again, we're prioritizing the sequential or linked projects that, if you think about, those projects are the ones that, we complete the music addition, the music classroom addition at Franklin, and we can backfill the old music spaces right away, so we don't have any time where those are sitting fallow or are underutilized. And then there are additional projects that are linked to that, so we want to prioritize that so that after that second summer, when the building additions come online, those renovations come online at the same time. We're prioritizing also making sure that we look at, at the end of each construction period, that each, each school is left whole. There's no lack of classrooms at each one of the schools, so a delta zero total on the classrooms at each one of the schools at each summer. And then, we're, we obviously have heavy renovation work during the summers. There are very aggressive summers that you're going to see here with the amount of work that's going to be going on at the schools.
Can you, can we go back to that? I'm sorry, real quick, the last one we were just on, thank you. So, again, just, just two things to kind of call out, point out to the board on this. So, one, you'll notice potentially under this schedule, we actually complete and get out of one of the buildings after summer '26. So from just an overall kind of like mobilization, also some of where your construction management team kind of priority is going to have to be. priority is going to have to be, we have the potential to actually finish, kind of vacate one of the, the sites early. Two, just again, I want to, want to specifically call it out, I think it was, was there, the original schedule, we didn't anticipate those new spaces coming on until likely midway through the '26, '27 school year. That's been accelerated. So all of the new performing arts spaces will be occupiable '26, '27. But that summer '26 especially is going to be an extremely heavy summer, because you're going to have completion of all of those new spaces, right, as they go through at all three buildings, plus a heavy dose of renovation across all three schools. So I don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but I'm, I'm just kind of calling it out, putting it on your radar, that we are going to have to look really carefully once the, kind of the final detail of this schedule comes online, with making sure we truly have enough time in that summer of '26 to not put us at risk of, you know, kind of work carrying over. So not, not telling you it's coming to you yet, but, but the start of the '26, '27 school year is something we may come back to revisit, perhaps with the board. Not going to impact next year's school calendar. We have a start and an end date and everything else for next school year, but potentially start of '26, '27 school year. We just want to make sure we're not putting kind of this risk at, or this, this work at, at risk. So just out there for conversation.
There's something that I might forecast as, as we start thinking about the Sherman Durges work in the summer of 2026. I know we have a list that we reviewed at the Facility Committee meeting last week, but we might want to think about that in the context of this major work and kind of tweak that a little bit.
One question that comes to mind when you're speaking of this. So at least one of the three buildings houses summer school. So what will happen with that? Because I don't think we want students on site.
We would not. So I think it's Monroe has been doing that, and I think we've got plans to relocate that.
So E S Y typically has been in the mornings at Bauer with the transition to Monroe in the afternoon for Woodstra, so the Western DuPage Special Ed Rec Association. Nobody will be able to be in Monroe this coming summer. We've already arranged for that program to stay at Bauer. So we also will be able to pull back from any transportation concerns for this coming summer, too. So we'll have morning E S Y, the Woodstra program will be there in the afternoon. It'll just be a different pickup place for parents. But there'll be plenty of notification that goes out to the communities.
We also did coordinate. That was another part of our, our conversation with the Park District, as we went through with them. They're aware, so they have some summer programs that occupy the spaces, so they know when they're going to have to move summer camp programs as well, that won't be able to, to occupy, especially gym spaces.
Great. So we sort of previewed this a little bit in our previous conversation, but we have been working on engaging a whole host of groups within the district. We've established district-wide user groups for both standard classrooms, as well as science lab classrooms, and, and building operations as well. We've looked at, and this is a continuation of the discussions that came out of the master planning process and the, and the concept design process. These are groups that are by school and by, by district. We have regular meetings with, with executive team. We, we have building team meetings where we bring in established building teams for each one of the schools to talk about major general items. And then each one of these are specific user groups that we have, a stand, we have a, set a schedule of meetings already. We've had a number of meetings to date, and we will continue to do that, to, to get feedback on the design as we move through here. So changes that happen to plans are not done in a vacuum. They're communicated to the buildings there, and we seek that feedback throughout the process to make sure that they accurately represent what's going to be the best for those schools. So the external groups on the right, we've touched over most of these here. We'll also be talking to DuPage County, as DuPage County is a neighbor of the, of Monroe. There's a number of different entities that are at play right at, at the edge of Monroe there, that we've had some initial discussions with there, too, and we'll continue to do that, especially when we talk about construction site logistics and working around that site. So, any questions on overall schedule? So we have a lot to do, and we, we are excited to get moving with that. So as a, as just an entree into the design, we will anticipate a deeper dive into design when we come back to you next month. But we wanted to provide just a brief glimpse of some of the design decisions that have been made just in this, in order to simplify the, the project, try to, try to pull back from doing extensive work if it's not necessary. So we've taken a, a real closer look on that, worked with the building teams to understand what the impacts of these were. And we wanted to challenge ourselves and challenge the project to make sure that we were, we were going down the right path with any one of these approaches. So in the concept design, you'll remember that there were two building additions that were identified, in addition to the performing arts addition that is in the, the northwest quadrant of the campus. That building addition displaced the locker rooms that are currently occupying that area. The idea was to move those locker rooms into a small building addition on the other side of the, the gyms. We wanted to see how much we could minimize the, the building additions, because the costs are much higher to do building additions than to do building renovations. And we also know some of the challenges that happen on this side of campus, from an, from a construction site access, doing two pieces of construction at a time, keeping those locker rooms offline, and, and really hampering some of the access to the gyms in those areas. Number two, the south entry. One of the main goals here was to keep the eighth graders, as they're moving from the eighth grade locker commons into the main commons cafeteria space, from having to go into an entry vestibule. And you can understand the security challenges that can come from that, as well as the, the challenges of just free movement as they are moving through a pair of doors, having to make a tight right turn out of that. So the original idea was to put a small building addition out there with a new vestibule, so we can pull the vestibule away and allow free movement from the locker common into the main commons area. What we've subsequently been able to do is actually, for the locker addition, eliminate the locker addition entirely. We were able to say, we were able to really quantify how the common, the cafeteria commons was used with the building teams, and understand that there's an opportunity to actually build the locker rooms inside a part of that common space that was currently occupied by the stage, and then some into that common space itself. So that actually has some, some significant benefits by centering out that, that locker room area in the building, also providing direct access from the locker rooms to the main gym. We're able to right-size those locker rooms, consolidate them, have them be inside the building, and not add additional footprint to the building if we don't need to do so. For the south entry, what we, what we had, hadn't been able to do till date was understand the, the total life safety approach to the entire building, and how much of the exiting was required for that, for that vestibule. After doing the full study, we understand that we can reduce that by one bay of doors. So we can cut that vestibule in half, keep it inside the existing footprint, open up the locker commons to the main common space, and allow that free flow of movement without having to, to expand the building footprint. Another thing that we're working on here in this area is really prioritizing how, what the, the student movement, as well as the movement of public, is on the outside of the building, to improve security and safety for students as they're coming into the building, and to make it much more evident for visitors on where they're supposed to go on campus. And that, that's a design element that we'll talk about more at our next meeting. At Edison, very similarly, we had, if you remember, there was a, in the concept design, was a small building addition. In, in addition to the, the expansion of the gym, the desire was for additional practice, an ensemble space that would service the band and the orchestra spaces, as well as reconfiguring the existing practice rooms. That was a really small addition, high pri, high premium for putting that addition on there. So we wanted to take a look and see if there were other opportunities to work within the building in order to do that, and not have to go through the effort of having to put the building addition on. What we were able to find was the mechanical room that's immediately to the south of that area had some, some underutilized space within it, as well as looking at the overall mechanical, electrical plumbing plan for the building, and, and realize that we can reorganize that space, and it costs less to reorganize the mechanical equipment in that space than it would be to put the mechanic, to put the building addition on the, on there as it is. So we were able to pull that into the building, use some underutilized mechanical room space for the, for that ensemble, and reduce the, the, the new building stock that was added to Edison in general. So again, we're, we're trying to see as much, and we're working with the, the, the schools to, to try to see how efficient we can be with the project, so that the, the referendum dollars are focused on improving the educational environments for students as much as possible. So with that, I'll kind of open it up. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So with the elimination of these two small additions, does that bring our total down? Or are there cost escalations perhaps elsewhere, or do we not know yet?
I, I think we'll, we'll learn more when we get to the full SD budget, to know where we sit, sit overall. The goal there was to try to, you know, gain efficiency. We don't see any negatives to that, as far as how the buildings are operating. We see some positives in, in what we're doing, and if there's, and, and that may, it may help us out in other parts of the project.
And then the other question I have on Monroe, see on the, the first one, we had teachers lounge?
Yes.
Which is now where the locker room, where is that on the second?
Ah, eagle eye over there. So what we did was, we're actually working on, where the current auditorium is on the south of the common space there. That is, that, we're looking at, at different opportunities there to relieve some of the pressures from visitors going into the main office. We have a multipurpose room there, and as well as a teacher's lounge in that space.
I wonder if it was there. I was, I couldn't read that.
Yeah. So that's one of these, that's one, that's actually a really interesting change that was, that was recommended by the principal at Monroe, to look at, you know, we had, we had initially tried to focus all of our energy into the main administration area, but being able to separate, separate out visitors from students was one of their primary goals. And this really served a, a good purpose for what was originally designed as a multipurpose flex space, that can serve, serve that function as that, that, you know, that first touch point for visitors, without them having to be in contact with students there.
Now I'm going to ask another question that's too deep, but that, that room has a sloped floor. Is that floor going to be?
It'll be leveled out, yeah. Yeah. We, we use a product called Geo Foam. It's a, it's a foam product that, that has the same density as, as dirt, and it can be put in there, and then a concrete floor poured over the top of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. You know, obviously, part of the challenge is future-proofing in, in the work. We, we don't know what educational environments will look like 20 years from now. So I'm a little bit surprised that, you know, space that is flexible, like the commons, like that multipurpose room, that we're basically reducing that. I'm just wondering, on your perspective, based on other projects, is there a concern with displacing that much flexible space for purpose-built space?
Yeah, I think the, the, the one thing that, that the drawing belies here is just the sheer size of that, that multipurpose space at Monroe. Taking what we do right now, we're taking the entire stage and only a portion of the open space at, there. There's still ample room there. We did a cross comparison between the, the cafeteria space at all three middle schools, in order to, to test that out. We're also looking to remove the locker bays that are, that are boxing that space in. So the space may feel a little bit more open by getting rid of those, even though it's truncated in volume. And, and I think we have plenty of vertical space in there, too, so we can redefine sort of the feel of that space. I think you're right, you know, flexibility is, is critical to, to, you know, future-ready learning spaces in general. In this case, I think we have a lot of room to deal with, and, and I think it, it doesn't have as huge of an impact as you would imagine.
And then, with regard to some of the, the changes noted on the Edison plan, I just think back to, as we talked about performing arts spaces as part of the, the initial discussions, part of the challenge in some of the facilities was that we are using spaces today that weren't purpose-built for that. Things like soundproofing between rooms, presented problems. So when we do something like put ensemble practice in what was previously mechanical space, we're not walking into that same challenge, are we? Like, will that, will that space still be purpose-built for ensemble performance, sound insulated from surrounding areas?
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah, we, we wouldn't do it any other way. We have an acoustic consultant that is on board with the project, that we're, that we're working with for, for the theaters, as well as the orchestra spaces. They'll provide some additional input on how that space can be best separated from there. And the same thing on the, across the hallway, as we're looking at the practice rooms there, and right-sizing those as well, we'll do, we'll be looking at the same thing there, too.
And then, a question I've asked in the past, and always have been told that I'm asking the question too early, so I probably am again. But obviously, you know, our hope is that we see some efficiency gain by improvement to mechanicals in these buildings, hopefully enough to offset the increase in square footage, so that we see operating costs decrease. When along the timelines will we have a first guesstimate as to whether that's a realistic assumption?
I don't have a crystal ball on, on exactly what the, what those will, what the costs of operating will look like. But as we're working on the projects now, we're developing an energy model with our engineers, and that gives a, a reasonable understanding of what the energy usage of the existing stock and the new stock will look like. And that can give us a picture of what that, what that will be. You know, so at the end of the design process, we'll have a reasonable understanding of what the energy use is. That may not, there's a, the, the challenge is that, that there's a broader picture that can't necessarily be modeled on, on how the, how energy actually is used within the building. So we'll have a reasonable understanding of what the building system, the new systems versus the old systems are going to look like. And then we'll test it out as we move through the process.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
So it sounds like we're getting closer to your answer.
I have a couple of questions. Going back to Monroe, so I, I really don't like the idea of cutting the multipurpose space. I know you say removing the lockers, which I'm curious where they're going to go. But before you get to that, if you remove those lockers, it's such a big space, that I think those lockers act as a, a sound barrier, because that is the lunchroom. It's very loud. I also think with having the teacher's lounge in front of that, or south of that, you may need some sound barrier as well.
Sure.
I, I just don't like taking away that space. So where do the lockers go?
The lockers, we're actually, we're, we've actually done a study on all three schools to see, you know, number of lockers that you currently have, and compared to your populations. What we found is at all three schools, there's more lockers than you actually need. One of the challenges at Monroe right now is that you have lockers that are grouped by grade level. So we've come up with a, a few different approaches to how that can be done, either by distributing seventh-grade locker rooms in other areas of the building, so that they can cohort together, or by using existing locker stock in the academic portion of the building to offset the, the loss of that. But we think that the num, numbers-wise, we have enough that we can get rid of them without any, without any challenge. It's really, it's really a cohorting question that we have to get down to at Monroe about how that's used. As far as sound and noise is concerned, the, the real good thing about Monroe is that we have a lot of buffers between the, the cafeteria space and any of the academic spaces. We have toilet rooms in the majority of the areas that provide a, a noise buffer between the, the open space and the classrooms. We have the, a, a back of house at the LLC that provides a buffer between larger LLC space. And we have the kitchen caf, kitchen space that provides a buffer between the exploratory labs and, and that cafeteria. It is certainly something to, to keep on investigating and understanding. I think if it's a larger space or a smaller space, we're still going to have the same issue with noise transmission that we need to be cognizant of, and we need to design for.
And having some sound buffer for the, the staff.
Yes, yes.
I, I can see that, anticipating that to be a problem. With the lockers, so if we remove some of them, because we don't need them with our population, what happens a decade or two from now when? what happens a decade or two from now, when we may see a rise in population? Can we find a space for them?
We're not gonna build directly to the exact numbers that you have now. We still wanna have at least a 10% buffer that's built in, so that it allows that growth, and it allows displacement as necessary. Um, but we think that there's still, uh, uh, opportunities elsewhere in the building, should that become necessary to do that. I also see that, you know, as we've grown through time, the, the revival, the reliance on lockers has decreased significantly. Um, we've certainly seen that at the high school level and beyond, where, um, where, you know, we have new high schools where we're not even putting in lockers. So, that trend may, may continue to work down into the middle schools in the future. Um, I think that's a, a question for some of the future, uh, planning of that process, too.
I do thi, I, I agree that happens at the high school. I'm not sure that that will happen with the middle school, but we don't have the crystal ball. Um, so I may be missing it, but whereas, was there not a new entrance in the rear? Like, by the auditorium?
Yeah, there, there is still one, um, north, just north of the auditorium. Um, as it sits right there, there's an entrance there. We have a drop-off that's been developed. You can see that little circle there. Um, we have a very tight site, um, so we're doing everything we can to bring vehicles for loading, unloading.
Okay, so, do you mean the south of the auditorium, or?
Uh, north of the auditorium.
Up here?
Uh, to, if, if the space between the, uh, there's a light gray space in between the three classrooms on the, the very north.
Okay.
And there's an entryway right on the, the west side of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Which we were anticipating to use for students with special needs, or?
It's, it's mul, uh, the students with special needs will continue to enter into the building from the south, um, from the, the entry. Our understanding of it is that, that they'll continue to use the entry that's immediately adjacent to the admin space there, um, as they, as they go to the essentials program. Um, the entrance to the north is mostly in a, a, it mostly honestly becomes an emergency exit, exit, or a drop-off space for, um, for people who need, uh, who, who, who need less, who are in need of a, a quicker trip to the auditorium than the, the traditional approach at Monroe is to use the main entries and filter through the common space to get to, to any of the, the, uh, the public areas, since the parking is down below. So, that's the drop-off zone for anybody who's coming to that space.
Okay, thank you, and I'm actually happy to see that, because I, I feel like in one of the original plans, it looked a little different, that it was going to serve the special needs population, and I appreciate that they're coming in the front door.
Yep.
Um, I think that's the only other question I had.
Angela, just one, no two.
Still looking at this big space that's now cut in half.
Well, the common space is not cut in half.
Because it's a stage, I, I understand that, but it's.
So, when, when we're looking at pure square footage, this space is still larger square-foot-wise than the Hubble common space. Think of how large that Hubble common space is, the cafeteria directly in. Even with curtailing this back a bit, using some of that space, the total square footage is still larger in this design than it is at Hubble.
Is that without the lockers?
That's not taking the lockers in, in, I don't think that was taken into account.
I don't, I don't, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But, but certainly, the design team at both schools, at all three schools, we're looking at our comparables internally, and Hubble obviously is a, is a baseline that we use for a lot of our discussions in this. The, the one thing we wanted to be clear of is, if we are moving that common space to something, what did it mean when we looked at Hubble? And in this design, it's still greater than the square footage at Hubble.
And, and you can see that in how they use the, the, the lunchroom right now. They have a good portion of the south side of the, of the cafeteria that's unused. Um, they want to push as many people towards the north side of the cafeteria as possible, um, just from a, a, a building operations side, to keep the, the, the visiting, visitors to, to gather, and that, that has since been covered over and incorporated into the entirety of that space.
Following up on Angela's comments about, um, sound, appreciate the thoughtfulness in making sure that sound won't carry over to the instructional spaces. I know as a board, we've received some community feedback about just the noise level, though, within the lunchrooms in particular, especially as our population that may have sensory issues grows. So, you know, that may be something just, to the extent possible, to consider as we reconfigure that space, is, is there a way to, to dampen the sound within the lunchrooms?
Yeah, and I think the wa, the way we, the way we're loo, looking at that is trying to increase volume in the space as much as possible. How much can we push the roof up, or the ceiling up, to allow some more space for that, that vol, that, that noise to go up, and not immediately be reflected back? We'll look at the materials in there as well, you know, as, as much as we can increase surface area of, of, uh, sound deadening within that space, we'll, we'll certainly do that.
Um, I appreciate the, what you said about the Monroe Commons. That was the one question that I had, that when you see it on the paper, and you can't see what stage and currently unusable, I wanna make sure that these plans are good for not just our students now, but for moving forward, how would demographics change? And so, that was really helpful. Um, the other thing that I thought is, as we looked at this, is just how big of a puzzle this is, and how many moving parts there are. Um, and I like that the schedules moved earlier to where we can get some results, have increased, or, I'm sorry, decrease a cost in disruptions. But what is our communication plan for not just those stakeholder groups that you identified, but the broader student and parent group? Because there's still, like, there's no way around it. It's just going to be complicated and hard. Um, and making sure that they're informed of how this is adjusted to minimize those.
Yeah, I, I think before, before, um, Jeff and Brian weigh in, I think, you, you're right on, communication and change management is absolutely critical. Um, what we found in, in these multi-phased, complicated renovation projects is students are really resilient. Um, it doesn't phase them at all. Um, it, 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 we have some challenges with adults, we're, we're kind of, kind of stuck sometimes. Um, but that's okay. I think, I think early and often communication of what, what it's gonna look like at any given time here, and making sure we stick to that is the most critical thing, from my perspective on that. We also wanna make sure that we receive feedback. So, you know, we had, if you remember during the concept design phase, we had a pre, so, a pre-design, uh, survey that was developed to see, you know, what are the things that, that need to be improved? And we wanna i, issue that after, uh, improvement projects are done, so we can see and learn from that, and understand, did we hit the mark? Or are there other things that we need to, that we needed to look at? So, this pre-post occupancy approach to things really allows us to learn, and allows, um, students, faculty, staff, administrators, all to be heard as well throughout the process. Any other concerns?
Yeah, I think, really, just a couple of other things I would add. One, uh, recognize, well, it really was simplified to, uh, a slide up there. I think there have been a lot of opportunities to engage staff early, so much like, really, the, I think, the example of the referendum with the entire community. We've done the same thing with the staff throughout this project, to make sure that, obviously, their input is factoring into design, and they see that in iterations coming back to them. And, and I mention that just to say, um, I think that's important, and that staff, I think, are going into this in a very different, excited place, seeing kind of that level of engagement. Uh, Brian and I are actually meeting, uh, we wanted to wait until we had a chance to present this update to the board. We're going to each of those three middle schools to a faculty meeting in the next month to give them an update, make sure that, uh, they understand it. Three, you made the change a little while back in how you organize staffing for our maintenance custodial crew. Uh, and so, we do now have a dedicated building lead at each of those three schools that we're leaning on heavily throughout the construction process to make sure that they're a regular point of contact. Uh, again, Brian and Kevin, and I met with the administrators and those building leads a, a couple of months ago, to really help them understand their role throughout, and, and really kind of understand that, um, when we get into the heavy construction, they're the, the point of conduit. But, but again, um, while this is complicated, and there's a lot of moving parts, the actual construction inside of the building is compressed to a couple of summers, and so, uh, I don't know that students are gonna feel it, uh, except for the fact that where we are doing construction, we are gonna be, have to be ready to mobilize those classrooms immediately. Me, meaning, like, when school is out, as kids are walking out one door, I can assure you, the, the contractors are gonna be walking in the back door to start a half an hour later, and what that just means is that, um, we're gonna have to, to make sure that classrooms are packed up in, in an efficient way. But again, uh, good news is, you've done so much work at your other buildings that Kevin, Brian, teams, like, we've done that at elementary buildings a lot. We just, we've got a good model for how a building can get classrooms packed up and, and ready to go. And those are early conversations, especially with Monroe, that's this summer that we've already had with Ashley, is looking at the spring schedule, how she can take advantage of opportunities to make sure that teachers have ample time to kind of get organized, cleaned, you know, and, and actually, that conversation even started a while back, to saying, the best thing to do to help with packing is start cleaning right now. Like, start going through your cabinets and your areas that haven't been looked at in a while, and start, start purging now to make the process of packing. So, I thi, I think, uh, fair. On the, the list, we'll piece on the community side, so, um, that's certainly something that, uh, Alyssa and I have, have talked about, is the site that we use during the referendum will remain our site to communicate with the broader, uh, community, and so, we, we've begun to have some conversations when we get a little bit deeper into the construction schedule on how we can do a regular cadence of update to the community with some video kind of updates to just show progress as we move through the, the, the projects. But, you, you're not gonna avoid the fact that, as much as we plan for this, something's gonna come up, and, um, we're just, we're just gonna have to, to work through that. But, these, again, these projects are long enough in development that I can assure you, your middle school staff, administrators, leaders are, they're anxious and excited about the opportunities that are gonna come on the back end.
Yeah, three, three questions on Monroe. If you could hit that little plus sign and kind of zoom in, in the classroom area. Um, one, we talked about the multipurpose space lost at the front. There is an opportunity at the top right of that, I don't know what grade that is.
Sixth.
Sixth grade.
Yep.
In the future, to go kind of repurpose that space where we have our board meetings? Uh, actually, we have our board meetings in that multipurpose room, or the cafeteria?
Well, in the cafeteria.
I think we've actually done both. We were back there once, we were in the cafeteria most recently.
So, there's an opportunity in the future, should we need more multipurpose space to reuse that? In terms of the kind of prototype classrooms we're doing this summer, I'm just curious, you know, we talked about furniture and technology. Is there some thought about instructional technology planned in those classrooms?
Yes, at Monroe, we are in the process of working with, um, administration over there to pick two classrooms, each of which will be outfitted with a different, um, mock-up of what potential educational technologies would be. And so, the thought would be for teachers to sign out and sign up for, uh, the ability to teach in those spaces. Cause, but we found out when we picked some of the options that it wasn't enough just to put it in a room, and have people walk through and look at it, and say, oh, that's great. We, we wanna put it through its paces, right? So, the only way to really do that is to get teachers actually in the mode of teaching in there, and see what potential difficulties might arise, if any, for those, and then to give some feedback on which setup they liked best.
And we're doing the same thing with furniture in those classrooms, too, where we have, uh, a, a variety of different setups within there that we can get some feedback on. We have, we are developing a feedback mechanism for that, for, for both students and faculty, to provide input on, uh, what worked best for them.
And then, the third final thing, it, kind of at the bottom of that, there's a courtyard kind of outside those science labs. Has there thought about developing that in some fashion?
Right now, it houses an Eagle Scouts project from, uh, several years back. Um, we've tried to avoid, um, infilling courtyards at Monroe as much as possible, just because we, we have the access to natural light there. Some of the courtyards that were, the, some of the edge of the building that was on the north side was, was, would take away some of the natural light from portions of that part, part of the building. That we're, we're working on trying to bring that natural light back to those buried classrooms as well. Um, so, the courtyard, I think there's some opportunities for programming within that courtyard, but I, I'd like to see it remain an outdoor.
I wasn't proposing and closing it.
Sure.
Although I do think it would be awesome. But, I know at Edison, we showed kind of a development of the courtyard, our courtyard outside the cafeteria. Might be an opportunity there as well. So, you, you talked about natural light. What is the kind of thinking in terms of trying to get some natural light in those kind of in-board classrooms?
Yeah, so, we've designed, uh, we've, we had to take a real deep dive onto the mechanical and electrical systems in each one of those classrooms in order to understand, how can we get natural light into here? So, what we have is a two-pronged approach, um, you know, pending the cost review of this. Um, we have a skylight approach, we have a, a solar tube. This is a reflective tube that brings natural light into the space. Not as, not as quite as great as a skylighting approach to that, but still, something to bring that in there. Um, we're also looking at, at, um, some humics, human-centric lighting within the space, something that has, uh, as, as an approach, uh, to that as well, um, that can tie directly in with that natural light. But, but the scope was, you know, what is the, the least impactful that we can make that has the most impact, the least impactful solution that has the highest impact on the classroom?
I would just say that, that ought to be high on the priority list, to try to get some natural light into those rooms.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Uh, the next topic on our agenda is our five-year forecast. Dr. Schuler?
Yep, so, Dr. O'Keefe's, uh, making his way up to the, the podium, uh, and he's gonna walk through, uh, with you, your, your five-year forecast. We've spent a fair amount of time with finance committee, uh, looking through the, the data points that, uh, you're gonna see today, and, uh, without further ado, Dr. O'Keefe.
Good evening, thank you. Um, quite a bit of information to go through, so, uh, as I think I typically state, I'm gonna move through this quickly. Certainly, any questions that you have, um, ask them when you deem they are appropriate, because there's a lot here, uh, but really, when it comes down to it, it's about the assumptions that we put into place. So, financial planning as a whole, this is a usual and customary presentation to the Board of Education at this meeting every January. The software that we have been using for many years has been rebranded, it's renamed. It's Financial Planning Analytics, formerly of Ficast. It's actually part of the frontline family now, um, and why do we do this? So, um, first of all, what is the tool? It, it's a tool that really is an input tool from two different areas. One, it's the assumptions that we're looking at internally within the district, and then secondarily, all of your AFR information from all prior fiscal years gets loaded into the system, too. So, what we're, we're looking at, when we're, when we're looking at this specifically, it's from the lens of an accrual basis, so, because that's the method that's used from an accounting practice perspective with the AFR. And what we're talking about, um, specifically, your operating funds, that's gonna align also with the AFR. And again, those will be in, I'll talk about them more here in just a few minutes. But, 10, which is education, 20, operations and maintenance, 40, transportation, 70, in essence, your piggy bank, but that's working cash. So, what does this help us do? It helps us gather information, put it into a single system source, and then really play with that system is, in as many ways as we would like to get some potential projected outcomes. Specifically, what is a five-year forecast? It's, it's a comprehensive, interactive tool that allows us to look at what financial decisions we think we may need to bring to you to consider in the future, especially as assumptions change. How do we use it? This is certainly, the budget is built into this, our tax levy is built into this. Any scenarios or trends? And those are assumptions that we'll talk about here. And then, any other types of updates which are important. Think of changes at the city level, at the county level, at the state level that may not necessarily be controlled directly by you, as the Board of Education in the district. Uh, a few metrics off of your, this will be a reminder to you, if, uh, you recall going through the AFR just last month. So, um, we are, we have moved to a specific operating expense per student, and that's not tuition, that's operating expense. This is top-line total expenses divided by students of 18,000, 18,000, excuse me, 18,510 dollars. That's still actually below the state average, and I took a peek. The state average for fiscal year '24 has not been released yet, because all the AFRs for every single public school district in the state are still not done. About 25% of the state still does not have its AFRs submitted to the state. Um, that's, that number, that 18,510 is still below fiscal year '23 average for the state, and, and I would anticipate still be significantly below what the average is when all of the AFRs for the fiscal, for fiscal year 23. is when all of the AFRs for the fiscal, for fiscal year 24 submitted and compiled at the state level. Uh, you know, your fund balance is at 31.04%. Again, that's a, that's from an accrual perspective. Your fund balance, as you see on a monthly basis with your monthly cash reports is at 34% for last year. But again, all this data you'll see is based off the AFR. Bond ratings haven't changed. Um, we anticipate having the highest possible designation for financial recognition again for fiscal year 24. And then if you recall way back in September, you passed the 15th year in a row of a consecutive balanced operating budget. Excuse me. Overall, what are the elements that go into this? The budget's in there. Financial AFRs, your financial reports. So we have to put in CPI, which means everything related to the tax levy, any changes in or assumptions made to EAV and new construction, which was a part of the tax levy, any anticipated changes to EBF or mandated categorical reimbursements, projected salaries and benefit information, projections related to enrollment or staffing, if there's significance and changes. And then anything else that we just need to take a big picture at. So most important thing that comes out of anything that we do related to the budget and projections is projecting CPI because CPI has the largest impact on your total district revenue, because that's driven off of the tax levy. So specifically just looking at this chart and some data on the right, if you were to look at CPI, CPI for a 10-year period, uh, up before 2022, tax levy 2022 hovered right around the 2% timeframe. We went through the pandemic, significant increase in costs for goods and services. So we had two years above 5%. 5% is our cap within tax cap counties. We live within a tax cap county. So even though CPI in levy year 22 was 7% and levy year 23 was six and a half percent, we were only allowed to ask for a full 5%. That was approved by the board. Levy 23 that you just, excuse me, levy 24 that you just approved last month in December was at 3.4%. Levy 25 will be capped at 2.9%. That is the December CPI number that was released by the federal government just one week ago today. Uh, we had it built into the model at 2.8%. So it was a bit of a increase, a bit of a benefit long-term. And we've predicted, uh, even though some of the averages to the right, bottom right, if you look over that, uh, three-year and five-year average, there are some spikes in there. Uh, we didn't necessarily feel comfortable to build spikes into a projection. So we're looking at where we believe the middle aspect of the next five years is going to look like from the Federal Reserve perspective. They've got a range. They want inflation to be at two as a whole, but they've got a range of two to three. So we took that middle point, which is a typical process for us. And we're looking at CPI at two and a half moving forward. What I think will be interesting to us collectively is what are the feds going to do this specific calendar year? If you asked any market individual six months ago, they predict that we're going to continue to see decreases in the Fed funds overnight rate. So the rate that banks are required to pay to borrow money from any other banks if they have to fatten up their reserves to meet minimum levels night after night, four to five would be significant. You're talking 100 basis points or 1% plus when you look at that. The market now is talking about two. And I was actually for this calendar year, I was on a call with Wintrust this morning. Their lead economist presented to public agencies. Um, there's even now, especially if January and February inflation is a tick above where the feds are anticipating it. Um, there's even a portion of the feds that think maybe they'll only do one increase or one decrease this year. So that overnight rate really is the driver of everything that happens from a, from a functionality perspective when we look at this. So we're, we're taking our typical conservative approach, but it will be interesting to see as the year progresses, what CPI does look like. If you recall from the tax levy, there was a few assumptions we had built in there. So your levy that you approved in December for levy 2024 had a 3.4% increase in operating. We were estimating really ballooning to a certain degree, 50 million in new construction. Um, if you do recall from that conversation that we had too, at that point, we were given known increases in new construction, known anticipated increases in new construction from the assessor offices of close to $42 million. We bumped that up to 50 because as you've heard me say, probably more than you would like to, you miss a buck, you lose it forever in perpetuity, times the bounce year over year. So we, we do our best to make sure we never, uh, miss anything. We've adjusted the model for the 2.9%, which is now levy attached to the increase attached to CPI for the levy 2025. Uh, but we've left new construction at 35 million bouncing forward, knowing that very well could change as we get more data from the assessor's offices later on in the year. And certainly we'll get a preview of what, uh, how close we were in our estimation for levy 24, late April, early May, when we actually get the first draft of the extension for levy 24. So some major revenue assumptions attached to this. Uh, you'll see some trends in different areas and certainly the premise behind all of this. And really, um, as good as I believe these assumptions are, these are still, it's still a snapshot in time. And literally something could have happened between last week and this week that would have an impact on this. Nothing significant has, but this is still a snapshot in time that we monitor throughout the year. So CPPRT, you've heard me talk about that. That is a distinct reduction in where we've been. We've actually, over a five-year period, moved from about $2 million in revenue to more than $7 million in revenue. And now it is predicted this year that we're moving back to about 3.1. We've made adjustments to get to that 3.1 and think there will either be a further erosion of that. That's all based on corporate profits. And that is from multiple fiscal years ago. So the Illinois Department of Revenue gives us an estimate of what they think it's going to be for CPPRT throughout the state, within every single agency. Um, you've heard me say this probably too many times too. They're never right. And I get it. They're never right because they're making assumptions off of corporate profit, which you never know until they file their taxes or refile their taxes. But it's something that we monitor and I would rather be underestimating that than overestimating it, uh, especially at the level that it's at within the existing budget. Interest income, this, this will be the biggest change you'll see in here, and I'll explain why. So Winbank and Trust is our main bank of trust. We've got many, many different accounts with Winbank and Trust. So AP payroll, then you've got two bank accounts for each of your funds. So you have a regular checking account in essence for fund 10 through 70 for each of those funds. We have a money market account for each of those funds. Past practice when interest rates were low was to leave all the money, especially after September proceeds, that September tax payment, to leave it all in the regular checking, in essence, the regular checking account, because there was no value in moving it to the money market because money market was earning close to zero, really the same amount as your so-called regular checking account. That has changed and we took a different stance to that this past fall, where we are moving, in essence, we're floating money in and out of the regular checking account. How much do we think we need in a given month? Jordan is moving the rest of those balances over to your money market. Your money market is still earning you as of today, 4.6%. It's a significant number for us. That change is more than a million dollars in what we're predicting for next year. And then certainly has some impact in the years beyond that because of just a change in practice based on where the market is at and interest rates are holding. We might look at that differently in the future. Maybe we'll lock it up in some short-term CDs or commercial paper or other things that would make sense. If those investments are greater than what the overnight investment rate through the Illinois daily funds that we're getting is, we anticipate that to come down. But there's nothing in terms of an instrument, um, within this fiscal year that is going to earn you more than what you're earning right now. And if you recall too, we have to use a piggy bank, the working cash fund to pay for operating expenditures in March, April and May. So we unfortunately don't have the ability to string investments out for years at a time to try to take advantage of what we think rates may come and how they might be offset in the future, long-term versus short-term. But for now, the amount of interest that you're earning in your accounts is incredible. It's historic for the school districts. As of December, you've almost met your budget for the whole year in interest income. And we still have six months left to go. Yep. Yep. We actually get a collateralized statement each month, uh, specifically from Wintrust as a whole. And it breaks out every single one of our accounts. And what is collateralized through a traditional CD or something that they are buying on their own, or what's being collateralized by Winbank and Trust themselves?
This is just in addition to the FDIC.
Yep. Correct. Yep. Yeah. So in that, in that case, John, all the funds that are being held are either, are either being insured by FDIC or Winbank and Trust is buying federal insurance from a marketplace to collateralize and make sure that your dollars are safe. EBF, you know, it's going to be very interesting here in about three weeks when the governor does give his annual speech related to the budget and where things go. Um, we, we were on a call, another call again this morning. Uh, the information that we're hearing so far is that it is projected there are going to be $3 billion under being balanced at the state level for fiscal year 26. What that exactly is going to impact and how accurate that is, I think we'll find out here again in about three weeks. Um, even at the top end of tier three, which we are from an EBF perspective, we might roll back a little bit because one of those 27 factors in the model is CPPRT. And as those numbers come down, that are just local dollars. Again, where we've got a minimum increase at 50,000 per year, the increase that you, that we received this year was $150,000 year over year. It's not significant in terms of the model as a whole and same philosophy. We're given the opportunity of uncertainty. I'd rather be a bit more conservative than not. MCATs, MCATs are going to be, I think, the biggest challenge moving forward. A third call I was on today related to that is if the state cannot balance its budget, where does it go? And I do think politically it would be a challenge to touch EBF. Maybe the, maybe the amount of new funding is a little bit different, but just the, the whole harmless aspect of EBF is a much more to my mind, political conversation throughout the state. I think where things could go specifically are MCATs and they're already, so imagine your regular transportation, special-led transportation from the prior fiscal year, plus private education dollars reimbursement that we spent built into a formula for the prior fiscal year. Those are your three major MCATs as a whole. They're already.
I think you just answered. I was just going to say before you go too further, if you could just give me a primer on MCAT.
Yep. So, um, anything related to transportation that you paid for last year, you are getting reimbursed this year. It's prorated. So by law it's prorated and there's a proration on top of the proration that's determined by the state. Same thing with private student facility tuition. Proration this year on, uh, transportation is about 80%. It's less than that. It's closer to 70% on private tuition. So to me, those are the challenges. We've got an increase built into next fiscal year because we underestimated what our reimbursements were going to be this year, even with a further proration beyond what we had already anticipated. So we just made that flat for next year. We, well, the increase is to get flat for next year and keep it flat. And we'll certainly adjust that as we know better. Um, one of the, one of our groups that we participate in, Lend, has actually asked DuPage County for information related to what we are being reimbursed for in prior year expenditures compared to the total spend in transportation. And in general, a quick average of DuPage County, we're getting about 40 cents on the dollar for what we spend in a full transportation fund from the state. Certainly there are other aspects to it. We put EBF in there. We have a tax levy in there, but the state's portion of that, that number continues to fall because they continue to further degrade the proration over time. And then federal grants, the, the big reason for changing in federal grants, is it possible that with new administration, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, IDEA flow-through, and preschool look different? Yes, we don't have any data on that yet. This alignment here specifically is because we had an $850,000 budget line item for previous reimbursements related to ESER that came in as revenue this year. There is no revenue for ESER coming back into the district. So all those funds that have been portioned out to District 200 have been spent and have been reimbursed over ESER 1, 2, 3, and so on.
So, so Brian, just to kind of summarize revenue assumptions that go into our model, a lot of unknowns, a lot of variables, very, very conservative projections going out.
Yeah.
That's the headline of this?
Yes. I, I am very careful about using exact unless I know for sure that I'm given exact information. So when we model, we look at what happened last year or within previous years, what did it look like in terms of the AFR from the financial side of things? And then what are reasonable assumptions to attach to that? And these are your major areas on the revenue side. Expenditures, pretty simple. Three quarters out of every dollar you spend on salaries and benefits. Um, so you see some major categories here that I'll quickly walk through. We have knowns from the WWEA perspective for at least one more year. So we're in year two of a four-year contract with the WWEA. We know next year, year three is a 6% increase. Uh, the year after is actually a range of three and a half to four and a half. So a floor and a ceiling that is based off of CPI. Like I mentioned, CPI modeling appears to be at least over the next few years below that. So we've used the floor of that, that if, if that adjusts, we'll certainly adjust the model to follow that. But it appears that the feds are believing they are getting closer to controlling inflation and that if their goals of getting inflation to two, but managing in a range of two to three necessitates specifically a three and a half. So the floor for fiscal year 27. After that, we just looked at, you know, what, what potentially, I won't even say potentially, uh, specifically what seems reasonable from an estimation perspective in the years three, four, and five related to salary increases. Model that the same way for WWEA and the CEA. Part of the CEA were in negotiations. Uh, so there was nothing built into this that would give away conversations that have happened at the table. We built 5% into fiscal year 26 because that's what they've earned this year. That's what you approved from them this year. We just rolled that year over. I cannot tell you if that's going to be the case. There is further conversations about many subjects just beyond salaries within those conversations. But then we used in the years out fiscal year 27 through 30, uh, same system logic behind WWEA. Our non-clerical admin staff seemed reasonable just to look at 2.5%. We know that there are lane changes in micro credentials that happen, pretty standard and flat throughout the years. Um, there are going to be upcoming retirements and resignations. You have retirements and resignations every year. Right now, based on what we know for those leaving the system this coming summer, so impacting fiscal year 26, we've got that at 1.25 million, just with offsets based on each type of job, uh, specific position and or description where we think the replacement could be from those that are leaving the system. 27 and 28, we've bumped up a bit more because that then is getting to the end of the contract with the WWEA. And we certainly have quite a few, uh, retirement letters, both for fiscal year 27 and 28. We'll monitor that as time goes. And then just moving back to that conservative end, not knowing exactly what contracts are going to look like, not knowing exactly how many in the system that have a distinguished career in teaching are still going to be in the system on the backend, that we just lowered those potential reductions. In general though, if you just look at turnover each year, turnover each year typically will equate to about a $500,000 savings to the board on average. It all depends on positions, all depends on timing. It all depends on, uh, you know, the education of those that are coming into the system too. But some reasonable assumptions we believe are built into it. Some other major expenditure assumptions. So medical, dental, we should have our preliminary medical renewal for 9-1 of 25 in our hands next week. We are hearing some good things on the PPO side and two-thirds of our staff actually take PPO. Uh, we're also going through a full PPO pharmacy benefit manager review right now. The existing contract expires at the end of the existing coverage year, which is 831. So we've built in something. We had 5% uh, in the model, uh, in the past, just looking across the board, it seems reasonable as a mix between PPO and HMO. Uh, we've had a few years higher. We're hearing that this year, uh, for the upcoming 9-1 should look a little bit better. We've got that at 6%. Throughout, we're being very cautious about purchase services and supplies. Certainly if it's in line with CPI, that's great. We realize there might need to be a little bit of flexibility here and there, but I would rather tell people that, you know, we're looking at minimal increases than, uh, you know, allowing for some folks maybe to dream a little bit bigger than what's reasonable. Purchase services, when we look at next year fiscal year 26, we've got a blend between Sunrise, which is a little bit over 5%. Sunrise, which is a little bit over 5%, that's a multi-year contract that you approved, and then we're less than 5%, which is the biggest chunk of it on the Illinois Central side. And we've kept that at 5% across the board because the fiscal year 27 matches that, and we'll see what happens in fiscal year 28 and beyond. Couple of things that always impact projections and budgets. Let's, let's look at the potential revenue side of things. You know, we've had minimal conversations about this, but if you recall, the, the board took a step during the pandemic to really cut all registration fees by half or more in actuality. If the board, not, it's not a recommendation, if the board was to consider doing something at the local level, that very well could be something you consider. If you look at where we've pulled back to what that could mean, if we just reinstated to the levels that were pre-pandemic, it is roughly $1 million in new revenue. One major thing that Dr. Schuler and I have been talking about, not only with the city, but we've talked about at this table too, is TIF number three. So TIF three in Wheaton is the last TIF. That is the TIF, that is courthouse, courthouse TIF, so that's east of Main Street. That expires on 12/31 of 28. If Wheaton follows the same pattern as it did with TIF two, which we are anticipating, they will close out that TIF in the calendar year of 28, which means we will be able to estimate what the incremental increase in EAV is. Right now, it's estimated at $35 million. It's the same for all taxing bodies. That times a tax rate of $4 is, you know, $1.3 million or so. It's, it would be a nice uptick. Then the question behind, the secondary question behind it is if the, if the city is anticipating or projecting a surplus, we represent roughly 70% of that surplus. So as of now, they are projecting, knowing there's some more capital work that they think they're going to do near and around the courthouse itself, stormwater, maybe some structure to the courthouse, the old courthouse itself. But whatever that surplus is, you're entitled to your proportionate share as a Board of Education, as are each of the individual agencies. Again, we represent almost 70% of that. That is a pretty significant dollar amount when you multiply those two together. Does that mean that's what it's going to be? No. Does that mean the timing of it is going to be in a timeframe that fits specifically within here? No, but we've not included that in these projections. No differently, we've included any potential return to pre-pandemic levels with registration fees. And then certainly, if, as we explore all of our sites and look at high schools and what we potentially can have to do with our athletic fields, specifically the turf fields, bleachers, press boxes, all those things, are there opportunities for us to look at community partnerships that might, you know, either help ease, ease the burden from a financial perspective or offer more opportunities to our community partners? On the reduction, or so the expense growth or the revenue reduction side of things, going, you know, it's contract negotiations. We're going through it now. We'll go through it again in a couple of years with the WWEA. If, if those are significantly off from what's in the model, then obviously that changes what the backside of the model looks like. We've begun with the, with our facility committee talking about athletic fields and specifically timing associated with that. Nothing to share specifically, but that is something that we know is coming within the next five years here. Again, like as I mentioned before, the state of Illinois budget is totally up in the air, so we're not quite sure how that's going to have an impact next year. And if there's some sweeping tier-two adjustment to get in line with federal social security that somehow becomes a cost or a burden to school districts, it's not something that we're aware of now. It's not something that we would anticipate being pushed on you, but it's certainly a risk that could come up in the future.
How have we dealt with full-day kindergarten, all-day kindergarten revenue loss reductions?
That, that revenue has been backed out of fiscal year 28. So all-day kindergarten takes effect the beginning of 27, 28.
So 25, 26, 27, it's included in as full revenue?
Including as existing revenue.
Existing.
And then backed out. And there's no anticipated changes to 80K fees between now and then either. Just a reminder of all of our funds. For the public purpose, we do not use funds 80 and 90. There are some specific and very distinct stringent rules around how that money gets used, but those are not two funds that historically this district has had in play. And I, and I certainly understand that this is going to be tough if you're looking up at the screen, but here's a couple models of what potentially, using all these assumptions, things would look like. So far, the left column just talks about all the categories. The column next to it, highlighted in black up top and below, that's your fiscal year 25 budget. If you recall, there is an identified surplus in here for two major board and actions that took place with this fiscal year 25 budget. One, if you recall, TIF number two had a surplus payment come out of it, excuse me, TIF number three had a surplus payment come out of it in fiscal year 24. That was $2 million that was not used. We're using three quarters of that for our safety, security updates that happened at all of our schools already throughout the year. Jason and his team did a great job of getting all that work done. Jason, thank you. And then the second piece was a projected output of costs in advance of the referendum specific to Perkins and Will. So those two pieces together make up that 2.9, 1, 2.9 million dollars. I will tell you that the anticipated expense to Perkins and Will's will was not quite what we were looking at, so that number will actually be a little, be a little bit less on year end, but you're also going to reimburse yourself for those expenditures prior to the fiscal year end and after the debt issuance has closed. From there, then you get into the five years of projections. So I'll orient you to the middle of it where you see surplus deficit. It's right in the middle of the page, highlighted in yellow, below the blue lines, that is your operating surplus or deficit. That's your baseline for your board policy as it relates to a balanced budget. If that is in black, then you have a balanced operating budget that meets your specific board policy. If it's not, obviously, it doesn't. Below that are your capital output financings specific to what you approve related to Sherman Durgis Capital Projects. $9 million in the budget for this year with everything that has been approved. We've, we've got some fine, some close to final updates for 26, so we're able to back off a few hundred thousand dollars just based on how the bids came in and what the board approved. And then we've got two years of build-ins, so $7.2 million, which is what you anticipate spending in construction and architect fees for Sherman Durgis, plus $650,000 for two playgrounds per summer. So that's your $7,850,000. The reason there's a drop-off in years four and five is because you'll be finished with your playground projects. So we just revert back to as of this moment, specifically what we have been allocated to Sherman Durgis. Doesn't mean things won't change in the future, but from a holding perspective, that's what we put into the budget. Below that is where you get into either a surplus or deficit after those specific decisions. And as you'll see, every one of these numbers, while we have slight deficits, and certainly there's a bit more uncertainty as you move out to years three and for sure, years four and five. But if you look at fiscal year 26, at this point, we're projecting with certainly a lot of data that still has to be understood, mined, and built into it as it comes along the next five months as we work on the tentative budget, a def, a projected deficit of $1.5 million. If we left this scenario in place, it just means you're using some fund balance to pay for what it is that we're projecting, we're going to, we're putting in place for capital projects this summer. From an operating perspective, though, my responsibility is to make sure all of that is even or black. So even as you look out further beyond that, it is our understanding and how we practice on your behalf to make sure that's, that those red line items become neutral or a little bit black so that we're not eating fund balance as time goes. And this is operating funds specifically, this chart, which as a reminder, is funds 10, 20, 40, and 70. What that looks like, just if you look at the range of your board policy between 25 and 40%, so the 25% is the blue line on the bottom, 40% the blue line on top, you see there is a reduction in the fund balance over time. That's not something we would anticipate happening as a whole because our, we do bring back to you fully balanced budgets. If for some reason, though, the board made a decision to use fund balance and there was no other way to, to look at tackling our capital projects or supporting something else inside of the district, you would still be within your range of 25 to 40% on the back end of these five-year projections. So historical and projected, this is, this is five years behind, five years forward, then just here's your five years forward. You'll notice on here too, on the transportation side, we dip below zero when we get out to years four and five. It's not something that can actually happen from a legal perspective. That means we would adjust tax levies accordingly, so I would not worry about what that says on the back end of it, but know that same picture as the, the previous slide, still within your board policy if everything stayed exactly the same. When we look at your overall budget, so this is all accounts, all funds, 10 through 70, you'll notice that there, there appears to be a pretty significant surplus in deficit in projected 26, and that specifically, I'm going to go to the next slide real quick, because of your debt service fund. So if you recall, as of now, your last debt service payment is October 1st of 2025. We have revenues coming in to support that, the first half of the tax levy for 24, but not the second half of the tax levy because those funds are here. So there's not as much, there's not revenue coming into fiscal year 26 to support it because the funds are already sitting in your account or will be sitting in your account. So that's a significant deficit from that perspective. It doesn't mean that there's a deficit and an issue in the system. It's just timing related to when the debt payment is compared to when the revenue comes into the system as a whole. That's nothing to worry about, but if you see, that's almost $7.4 million of that eight point, almost $9 million there. The difference between, or the delta between there and what we showed specifically here is this doesn't include I R F. I R F is included in these numbers here. Even long-term, no major significantly, we believe, major decisions that would be board-driven decisions that we would have to concern ourselves with at this moment in time. Just to look at what the fund balances, five years behind and five years forward look like when it comes to the budget in total, still within board policy. Same thing if we just look at that five-year scope.
Board members, any questions?
Just some comments. We had lively discussion around this at the Finance Committee meeting, and so just a couple of observations to share with the broader group. You know, as already noted, you know, conservative view on both revenue and the expense side, which I think should give us some comfort. You know, I'd add a question about CPI fluctuations and the impact to this, since it's one of the biggest levers. From a sensitivity analysis standpoint, if the CPI comes in at the higher end of the Fed range, our five-year outlook actually improves, which to me was initially counterintuitive, but we're in better position if, if CPI comes in slightly higher. If you were to look at this five-year projection versus the one from a year ago, we're actually looking like we're in better shape, and I think that's both a demonstration that the conservatism is a, a good approach for us, but also just strong continued fiscal management by the, the district. The, the slide that showed risks and opportunities relative to revenue and cost, I think is tipped largely favorable with one possible exception, which is the high school athletic field updates, which includes not just the fields, but the bleachers, press boxes. So glad to hear Facilities is looking at that. We had some discussion around, you know, would there be an opportunity to fund some of that out of Sherman Durgis, given that, you know, presumably with the middle school work, we're not going to see a lot of need across the next five years of incremental Sherman Durgis work at those middle schools. You know, and the only other thing that we had discussed, which isn't directly part of the five-year projection, but we may obviously have another tax abatement opportunity in our future similar to the one we engaged in a year ago. So those are just a couple of additional callouts.
One of the things we talked about at the Facilities Committee, which is really a financial planning tool, is given, you know, what we're doing with the middle schools, the model work that we've done at the high schools and elementary schools recently, it might be an opportunity to kind of, not take a step back, but kind of tweak our approach going forward on the high schools and the elementary schools and make sure we have a good updated plan that reflects current conditions. Some of the, you know, we, our facility group manages it all the time, but might be an opportunity to take a, a deeper look back and do a reassessment of those buildings, refinancial forecast, possibility of kind of reforecasting what we want to do for the next five years within this. So it's a good opportunity, I made mention to, summer of 2026, tons of work going on with our staff, might be an opportunity to really focus, maybe do less Sherman Durgis or kind of zero in on some specific targeted projects. So that's a decision kind of going into this summer as we forecast the 20, you know, the, the budget the, the board would approve in September, right? So a couple of variables that we can manage that impacts those lines.
Eric, you commented on inflation, higher inflation. I'm assuming that that stays below the 5% cap?
Yeah, then things get ugly if it goes above.
I have two questions and one comment. So with regard to the high school athletic facilities, do we have a timeline for when it's going to be absolutely necessary to tackle that work?
Not, not exact yet, but certainly within the next five years, we think we're going to have to replace the turf. And in conjunction with that, just the age of the bleachers, both home and away, and the press boxes, it probably would make sense to, as best as we can, package all of that together, whether it's fields first and then bleachers and press box or vice versa, or one side of town and the other side of town we have to work through. But the turf was put in in 2014, so we are, you know, we're 10 full summers of use moving into summer 11. Typical lifespan is 12 to 14, we're told by FieldTurf, so that's within that five-year window.
And that's for both high schools?
It's for both. They were both put in at the same time.
Thank you. I, I think my biggest concern coming away from this is the state, the unpredictability of what's going to happen. Do we have, like, if we take worst-case scenario and even looking at, will the state be delayed with payments, that kind of thing, like, what happens then?
This. I think there's two ways for it. One, we'll, we'll have a better perspective of what things look like in about three weeks when the governor does a state of the, the state of the state address and, and proposes his budget out to the public. We're hearing that there could be a $3 billion deficit. We don't know if that's factual yet. We don't know recommendations from different agencies. He's built into his existing models and what those outputs are going to look like. I would highly, I would be supremely surprised if EBF is touched. Maybe, maybe the amount of new money is a little bit different, or maybe there's no new money, but EBF was such a statewide organization of determining the best way to fund public education and do it in a more equitable way across systems that I, that to me, it's too much of a political issue to touch. MCATs are kind of behind the scenes that people really don't know about. So if there was going to be some adjustments, I very well think it could be in future reimbursements for your existing expenditures as a whole. We're, we're fortunate because we do have fund balance. The state's done a really good job of paying its obligations on time the last five or six years, really since EBF came into play. There's been consistency in when we should expect money and when we are receiving money. So I'm not worried about the timing side of things. I just think the question is, how is the governor looking at education as a whole, and what does that mean to us as a district?
Brian, can you go back one chart too? So just, just one other thought around that, Angela, which I think it's, it's a great question, and we, you would not want to. And we, you would not want to rely on this as a strategy, but the other thing that the board has done, perhaps without even realizing that you've done it through the kind of Sherman Dirges approach, is that on a, in an individual year, you have bought a little bit of flexibility for how you could respond to a state situation. Meaning, what you look at above the line, you, you know, like in terms of like true operating budget, you've built some cushion inside of a year, meaning you would not want to do it, but you would have the ability, if you needed, to, to perhaps like hold off on a, on a capital project if you absolutely have to for the purpose of giving yourself time to respond to a state condition, right? The worst thing that happens when you get into kind of state budget challenges is when it comes at the very last minute after you're already six steps through the budget. That's what's tough, right? Because then you just don't have thoughtful time to kind of react to those conditions. And, and again, since so much of your money is tied up in, in staff like that, you really get pretty handcuffed once you get beyond April kind of riff dates and all of that. But again, you've bought yourself, just my opinion, a little flexibility inside of a year to say, if the state does something really goofy, you can react with how, having to like immediately cut a bunch of staff that you wouldn't want to cut on a really reactionary basis because you, you have a little time, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. I think back to 2008 when we had to be more reactionary. So that, that makes me feel good that we wouldn't have to be that reactionary. So I thank you for that.
And you wouldn't want to do it as a strategy moving forward because that will quickly dissipate if you do that. But, but within a year, if you absolutely needed to, you just have put yourself in much better financial position kind of with that strategy.
Thank you. That helps. And then with the open negotiations going on, if numbers change a bit, we are able to absorb that?
Plus, so our plan at this point is anything related to negotiations, firm updates in the model so that it's clear what the impact is. And we're going to see this through conversations too. The other side too, is you have a debt issuance that is happening in March that has not been reflected in here at all. So we're going to want to update that too because that's going to impact your working cash. And then certainly you're going to have a string of built-in debt payments that we're going to have to add in to Fund 32, just so you can see what those outlooks look like because you do have at this point a projected, as Eric mentioned, surplus once we're done with the upcoming payment, October 1, at a number of about $2 million that you could potentially use to abate or other methods that we can talk about when it's appropriate.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I think this is really helpful to just kind of pause and look forward for the next five years. So thank you. There is no public comment for tonight. And so no other action coming before the board, an open session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So move. Second.
I didn't catch who that was. Moved by Mr. Paulson, second by Mr. Drippy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned.